serving as Mayor as Bristol, Tennessee. I'm opening, calling to order this meeting. And the first thing we'll do is to have Tara Music, our Recorder and Financial Director, to give us a roll call.
Okay, King?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luthrel?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Fire Robin?
Here, thank you. Mr. Sora, do you have staff and guests you want to introduce at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make sure you can hear me. Can you hear me fine? Okay, good. And I'll just make a few comments and then Dr. May can give you a status of the update in Sullivan County where we are. But basically, we've taken a significant action, and I might say historic action, in Sullivan County in the fact that we have issued a public safer at home public health order. Under Tennessee Code annotated 68-2609, Dr. Stephen May is our Health Officer, has issued this order. And before we get into questions and comments about the order, I would like for Dr. May to give you an update about the COVID-19 response and what's going on in our community. And we'll proceed from there if that's okay, Madam Mayor.
Sounds great. Dr. May, you want to unmute and give us an update?
Yes, ma'am. We continue to see increasing number of cases here in Sullivan County now with community spread and also involving some of our healthcare facilities. As such, now seeing community spread, we think it's important that we increase the amount of social distancing and restriction of movement to prevent further propagation of this pandemic.
Okay, do you have any, any further numbers updated for today?
The state numbers show that we are at 11, but the true number is actually 13. There'll be, though, as a technical issue, there was a large number of labs that's being released today that had been backlog over the weekend. So I expect to see numbers jump significantly over the next 48 hours as we get those reports in.
Thank you.
And, and one thing that complicates those 13 cases is we have multiple contacts, Mayor and Council members. And that is a lot of work for our staff, of course, but the important issue from a public health standpoint is some of these cases, again, have multiple contacts. In other words, there's potential there for community spread even further than what we're experiencing now. So without a doubt, that will occur as we move forward over the next few weeks. But certainly, we're doing everything we can to minimize that spread today. And regarding the public health order that alluded to earlier, and I hope that each Council member has it's a, it's a three-page document that basically encourages our citizens to stay at home. It encourages businesses that can to please close and allow their employees to remain home. If they are essential businesses, they need to practice social distancing as much as they can within the scope of their, of their business and, and delivery. This does, it is not inclusive. It doesn't say that every business in the city or county has to close. It, it defines essential services in the order. We have FAQ type bullet points that are attached with the order to help give additional explanation. And also, we're using a web hyperlink that the Homeland Security Office has defined as essential businesses in a community. And for an example, businesses that could remain open are federal and state offices, of course, essential Southern County government functions, food, beverage, grocery stores, and etc., healthcare, mental health behavior, biomedical sanitation and waste removal, energy, water, and sewage businesses in districts, pharmacies, fuel stations, gas stations, if you will, banks, legal and judicial services, laundromats, home business, warehousing. I won't go through the long list, but you can see the long list that's pretty, pretty much includes a large umbrella of businesses that we have in Sullivan County. And then for additional detail, they can use the hyperlink. One of the things that you may be aware of from last meeting, we've set up a line for citizens to call. It's 279-2777 for general COVID questions. We've been using nurses to answer the phone, a number of staff to take concerned citizen calls or informational type calls. We've been doing that for probably four weeks now. As part of this public health order, we will still use that line, but we have dedicated staff to answer questions about business, essential functions, or questions about the order. So we have segmented special staff to take those questions from all citizens in Sullivan County in regard to the public health order. The reason that we chose to do that is, one, is to provide a service and information. And, and if anyone has a question, they want to speak with someone directly, they can. Excuse me, and also gives us continuity and consistency in our answers throughout the county. So at this time, Mayor, if it's okay, I would be glad to entertain questions from you or the Council or Dr. May, I'm sure, as well.
Thank you. And Gary, we, we know your time is limited, so it looks like we probably have about five minutes or so of your time to answer questions. So Council, does anyone have any questions to, to either Dr. May or Director May's?
What is the timeline on this?
The timeline goes into effect March 31st at 12:01 a.m. And the end date is determined by the Health Department. We will look at this daily and we'll let the disease or the statistics of the disease rate drive that decision. But obviously, we'll be involving our mayors as we've been working closely together for the last several weeks. And that's how we'll proceed.
So we're not doing an end date, we're just leaving it open for now.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I was just going to ask if he could repeat that number one more time.
The start date is March?
The 279 number that people can call.
Okay, 279-2777.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
And I have a question for Mr. Sora. We, the press release that we've released today is great. And I'm sure that they will add that number somewhere on our, on the city's website to call.
My guess is John Luthrel is taking care of it as we speak.
I thought, I thought he might. I thought he might. So Gary, would you or Dr. May like to explain what the difference is in where we have been with the directives from the Governor and where we are now with this directive from the Sullivan County Health Department?
Okay, well, that's a great question. The difference is, and then Dr. May can elaborate, the difference is last week, we began seeing community spread. In other words, we had disease that was not related to out of tri-city area travel. And so when that occurs, we call that community spread. So we began community spread last week and continues in this region for the last several days. And so we believe, and I believe anecdotally, the data tells us that social distancing is the best tool that we have in the toolbox and ratcheting down does have an effect. And so that's what's prompted this, and I fully support it, and I, and I feel like Dr. May does, but I'll ask him to elaborate.
Well, when we look at the therapeutic modalities that we've got to address, we know that we don't have vaccines. We know we don't have any tested pharmaceuticals available to treat this. We know that unchecked, we're going to be dealing with at least 5% of the population that will require critical care or ventilator care. The only public health intervention that we have now is to slow the spread so that we can utilize our resources in the most efficient manner. As such, using these advanced social distancing or mandatory social distancing becomes even more critical in preventing that spread. Looking at Sullivan County, you could be looking at 5% of 155,000, which is a very significant number. And also, you're looking at a death rate of, looks like in the United States, around 2.5% as it moves through a population. So I think this becomes even more imperative that we deliver these type of social distancing measures in that that's basically all that we've got to control in preventing an overwhelming surge into our healthcare system.
Thank you. I just think it, I understand where you're coming from, and I'll be very brief. I think that our citizens don't understand what those numbers that you just gave us commute to. And of course, we don't want to frighten anyone, but we want people to understand how very real this is. And I appreciate what y'all have done.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
One question. The number of cases that we've treated already, approximately how many are still in the hospitals?
Currently, right now, we have one gentleman that is in the hospital. He is in critical condition and on a ventilator.
Ready.
All right, anybody else? I'll also note that I think we all, City Council, received a letter from Ballad Health also supporting this order and anything else along these lines to help them as they work on the treatment of folks with this virus. So go and support. All right, anybody else? If we don't, then we can let our health officials go and get back to work. And also, I think they have some other public appearances too as other communities and governmental bodies are, are adopting the same things that we are today too. So anyway, we can't thank y'all enough. We appreciate you. We respect the jobs that you're doing. We also just hope you all stay safe as well as all our other healthcare workers. So we hope to have you back with us for updates and just really appreciate, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you for having me, yes, and we appreciate your leadership too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would, I want to add too, before I sign off, that I appreciate the Councilman or Council leadership. And we will need strong leadership in the next few weeks in our city and county. And encouragement of this public health order is, is very vital to our success and for our citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So next, we, this meeting, which was last Thursday, we talked about hearing from some different folks. So we thought that it would be good to hear from United Way Executive Director Lisa Cooper and then also Melissa Roberts, who's working on resources as well. So we've asked Lisa and Melissa Roberts to be here today, and we appreciate y'all zooming in and talking a little bit about our community response for what we're doing, what we're trying to get ready for, etc. So Lisa, if you wanted to share with us a little bit, we'd appreciate that a whole lot.
Okay, great. Can you all hear me?
That's great to ask that. That's great.
Thank you, Margaret. Bill, City Council, for allowing me to be there today. And I'm going to have to work, put my glasses off and on so that I can see, to share with you. I just typed up a few things. Wow, I've been in this job for 22 years. And, you know, we've gone through lots of different things, 9/11, you know, tornadoes. And this is by far the worst that I've ever seen as far as the numbers of people that need help. And I don't know if you all know, but Bill and Margaret do because you're on our board, but we do not have a case manager in Bristol, somebody that anybody can go to when they need help, no matter what that situation is. We have great case management through DSS, DHS, Bristol Faith in Action, Salvation Army, and so on. But when somebody isn't being seen by one of those organizations, where do they go? Well, they come to United Way. And we always are fielding calls in those situations, but never before like we have been now. I will update you on just a couple of things. Monday, March 23rd, which is a week ago yesterday, the United Way of Bristol Board voted to pull $20,000 from some funds that were left over by several organizations last year and had been put to the side to determine where the greatest need was. And we pulled those. And we have created a United Way of Bristol Local COVID Emergency Relief Fund. And we have put an application together for our agencies last week. Those went out. And the deadline for that is this Friday. These dollars are going to be allocated to those agencies that are boots on the ground, those that are continuing to serve the population, whether it be in a little modified way, but still continuing to be out there. So we have actually put a local group together, an advisory committee, and I won't mention any names, but they represent donors locally, some of our luxes to typical givers. They represent businesses in our board. We have a really strong group. They'll review those applications early next week, and we hope to allocate those funds by middle of next week and have those funds in the hands of our agencies by the end of next week. And that's what our plan is. You probably did see that, you know, Bristol had also joined with our six neighboring United Way regional partners in the community to do a regional fund. And I will tell you all that both funds have had some donations, but they're both really, really slow. Those regional funds will be allocated by Regional Advisory Council, and they will also be for those agencies that are in programs that are boots on the ground. But please say a prayer for us as we try to raise funds to help our, not only our local Bristol community, but also our region to be able to have the resources necessary for that. Our goal for that one is 1.9 million. Oh, also, let me see, we, as I said earlier, we have many, many phone calls, people needing help. The majority of calls that we are receiving are people that have been impacted directly by COVID, whether they have lost their job. You know, I had a guy that I talked to today that works at a local restaurant, and he was laid off three weeks ago. And most people, of course, we are encouraging them to apply for unemployment immediately if they haven't. A few of the businesses that we have been, or people we've been talking to that have worked for local businesses and national have some relief funds of their own. So they're kind of going through that first before they sign up for unemployment. But their biggest needs are food, rent, and utilities. And so what we're trying to do right now is to pull those resources together to help them, not just say, hey, call this organization or this organization. We're trying to really reach out to those agencies and put those people in one-on-one contact with them. People are scared, you know. Most of the people we're talking to have never had to ask for help before. Most of them have children, and they're just worried. And I will tell you, you don't have figures in front of me, but it costs a whole lot more to try to find a place for somebody who's been evicted and lost their home and enough time to pay for a place and get them back in with all the deposits that are necessary and, you know, find them a safe place and all that. So we need to try to do everything we can as a community to try to ensure that we keep these folks housed, that we are able to help them find their help with rent and utilities. Help Your Neighbor Fund, which Bristol, Tennessee, actually promotes the program and United Way of Bristol administers that through Salvation Army. Normally, that finishes up each year at the end of March, but we've made arrangements with VTES to make that go through April. And then Lullum McVeigh, and I'll be looking at that again in mid-April to see if maybe we might need to extend that a little bit longer into June. We just don't know right now. Everything is still up in the air, and we just don't know what, you know, those needs are going to be exactly. We get a lot of calls from homeless families. We are working with six different families right now. And I'll do a shout out to Family Promise of Bristol and to Salvation Army and to the community healthcare workers out at the hospital, all the others that are working with us to try to get these families, either keep them in a motel for another week or so until we can get them a more permanent place, or, you know, we've got just a lot of different contingencies, I guess, that go along with each family. Most of them do have children, either in Bristol, Tennessee or Bristol, Virginia. And so we're just working with them to try to make sure that we are able to get them somewhere safely as soon as possible and then get something more permanent for them. And thanks to Bristol Faith in Action for hopefully helping us to do some intensive case management with them to continue this. Just a little bit of an update on some of our agencies. We have 25 agencies, and I won't go through all of them with you all, but we have been keeping those lines of communication open with them. Girls Inc. is an example. They're still, still continuing to serve their girls in Bristol, Tennessee and in Virginia. They've had to modify their program, do a lot of things remotely, but they don't take care of just the girls. They make sure that those whole, the whole entire family has what they need, whether that's food on the weekends. They're working very closely with Bristol, Virginia Public Schools and others to make sure that those kids have what they need. Sullivan County Children's Advocacy Center, they have four staff members that are working from home. There are three staff that are staying in the office. They are not seeing clients. And forensic interviews are an emergency-only case. Therapists and advocates are checking in with the clients often. Then the last one I want to mention is Frontier Industries. They are busy running supplies to their residential homes in order to keep people as protected as possible and keeping their clients at home. And unfortunately, with their clients, a lot of times, they just do not understand what's going on. They don't understand, you know, why they can't leave, why they can't do the things that they normally do. And they're all very, most of them really like that routine. So that can be really difficult. Many of the clients have jobs in the service field and are not working at this time. They've also been very hard for them about the worry and the impact on their finances. They are spending money on additional overtime for some of their employees in order to try not to cross staff into multiple homes so that they keep the, you know, the contact down. Arch, Appalachian Regional Coalition on Homelessness, keep in touch with. Arch, Appalachian Regional Coalition on Homelessness, keep in touch with Ann Cooper. She did report yesterday that, she listened in on a HUD webinar, I guess this was yesterday, and that $4 billion nationwide emergency solutions grants will have heavy emphasis on rapid rehousing, and those are being released. They'll know more soon. She said they're going to base it on a formulary used with regular continuum of care funds, but she's hoping that that means a pot of money will be available, and they won't have to actually go through that long application process. But we just don't know. But hopefully, if they're gearing toward rap, focusing on rapid rehousing, they will be able to do that fairly quickly. Margaret had called me yesterday and asked me if I could get some information on mental health services. So I reached out to Frontier Health on some of their other programs, as well as Hollins Community Services, and then Southwest Virginia as well. But I'll just report on Frontier Health since that's Bristol, Tennessee. They have moved most of their outpatient programs to telehealth and teletherapy. They're continuing to tag referrals and enroll clients and families through the same level of programs as before, but only through phone interviews. They provide their clients with the same level of service, including individual and family therapy, adult intensive outpatient therapy, adult adolescent intensive outpatient therapy, medication evaluation, and so on. They still have a walk-in center in Johnson City that's open 24/7, and I think anybody can go there. They also have their school-based staff in touch daily with the school system with those clients, because those are the kids that, wow, they really don't need to have an interruption of their service. They have been monitoring as well as the impact that the pandemic is having on mental health issues in our region, and they're in touch with Tennessee Suicide Prevention Network, which is also monitoring the suicide rate during the crisis. It's expected that the stress and anxiety that comes with this kind of unprecedented situation is going to result in mental health issues with folks that they have never dealt with anything like this before. So they are preparing to position themselves to address any of the needs in our community as they arise. I want to circle back around just quickly about food. We're working very closely with Bristol Emergency Food Pantry, since food is a huge issue, working with Jim White and those volunteers on a daily basis. They've cut back from being open five days a week. They're open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1 until 4. We've been helping them to recruit volunteers to not only pack those boxes on Tuesdays and Thursdays for distribution, those other three days, but also to go in on Saturdays and do that as well. And then to have the resources through volunteers to actually get those boxes into the hands of people on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. We have a contingency plan in place with Food City in case that they aren't, that the food pantry is not able to get the groceries that they need. That was an issue last Friday, but we will be doing, I don't really want to say what that is in case we don't have to do it, or in case we do, but we do have a contingency plan in place where we can very, very quickly still be able to provide people something in order to be able to have some food. And that's probably one of the biggest issues that we have right now, along with renting utilities. There's a lot of things going on right now. I appreciate you all giving me just a few minutes to share. And if you might have any questions, shoot me an email.
Whoa. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I'm getting feedback. Why don't we get Melissa Roberts to do a little bit more? She's Program Coordinator at Bristol's Promise, and I'm aware that there's, she's working on a grant and unable to do exactly what the grant says, so I've been doing a whole lot of other things. So Melissa can give a little update, and then we can direct any questions to the two of y'all. Melissa?
Thank you all, and thank you all for the time to update. I know Lisa gave you a lot of information, and so I'm gonna give you a little bit more information about what's going on with coordinated community responses happening in our area. So Bristol's Promise, in collaboration with United Way and many other partner agencies, has been working towards a coordinated community response to the COVID-19 pandemic since March 16th. So that's two weeks ago today. Our community reacted quickly to begin supportive efforts for the situation that was unfolding, and we continue to work towards those solutions. United Way and Bristol's Promise have worked together to ensure a holistic approach, while also decreasing duplication of efforts to create the highest return on our resources, because we have limited resources and want to make the most of those. By the evening of March 16th, Bristol's Promise went live with a webpage that listed all their five local, state, and federal resources and information. The website is located at bristlespromise.org, and it continues to be updated multiple times throughout each day if information is available. We've coordinated these efforts with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce, Believe in Bristol, the Bristol Public Library, and others. And as the situation began to unfold, United Way and Bristol's Promise, as Lisa said, mobilized to support our local Bristol Emergency Food Pantry, Salvation Army, Paving Grab, some other food and shelter providers, to ensure that they were able to continue providing services on some level, and to provide accurate information to our community about other feeding programs and sites. We know that our schools have started feeding sites and feeding programs throughout our area. So each of these organizations are currently continuing to provide services, but some of them have had to scale down due to health safety issues and slowing of donations. We've been hosting a weekly Zoom meeting each Friday with organizations, profit agencies, and our faith community, and the goal is to identify the needs within our community and create coordinated responses to meet those needs. We have nearly 30 attendees at each meeting from various organizations. The greatest, most immediate need that was identified for these groups, food and food donations, as Lisa said, volunteers, and then also access to showers and cell phone charging stations for our homeless populations. And so we're maintaining regular communication with these organizations to try to ensure community services. So volunteers, of course, are our greatest resource. After all, we are the volunteer state, and we continue to monitor the volunteer needs in our community and encourage everyone to visit volunteer-united.org to see what volunteer opportunities are available in the community. There are needs, everything from delivering food and medicine to our elderly shut-in population, to sewing face masks for our healthcare workers, and most recently, for our food pantry workers. So please continue to check the volunteer-united.org website to see how you can support our communities. This past Thursday, we had over 150 people join our Youth Networking Alliance Bristol's Organization Joint Meeting to launch a new website for information and referrals in our area. Eric Fields and his team at the Summit Companies walked community organizations through the Serving Tri-Cities website. This can be found at servingtri cities.org, and this allows agencies to keep current and relevant information on the services provided in our community. So this site has been a passion project for the Summit Companies for the past two years, but as our world changed, what started as a passion project gained a sudden urgency. So many thanks to Eric and Anita Fields and Ryan Oaks for prioritizing the work on this information and referral website that's now live for our reason. We also know that finding quality, affordable, and accessible childcare is a challenge in our community in the best of times. With the recent closing of schools, beginning into the current school year, parents are in need now more than ever before, especially our essential workers, our healthcare workers, our first responders, our grocery workers, and pharmacists, et cetera. And we know that the expanded FMLA comes under the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, and that will be effective on Wednesday. That'll help our workers care for their families, but we know that there are a lot of essential service personnel that still need to be able to find childcare. So Bristol's Promise and United Way are mobilizing our faith communities to meet the childcare needs of their own congregations. And this is based on a model being used by Summit Leadership out of Johnson City. We're asking our faith community to identify essential workers in their membership and connect them with displaced workers or volunteers also within their membership. So this work is ongoing, and we welcome any church contact information that you might be able to provide so that we can get the word out to our faith communities. United Way and Bristol's Promise will continue to work on mobilizing and coordinating our community agencies and resources to ensure as many of our residents are supported as possible. And we know that Bristol is a generous community, and we appreciate the calls to action from our friends and neighbors. We hope you'll consider finding a volunteer opportunity, donating food to our local food pantry, or making a donation to the United Way COVID-19 Relief Fund in coming days, weeks, and even months. These are unprecedented times for our world, but we're Appalachians. We've weathered a lot of storms, and we'll continue to do so together. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Right. Thank you very much. And Council, do you have questions for Melissa or for Lisa at this time? If not, I know we all have a lot of concerns, and I would say a couple of things that, for donations, go to the United Way website. For volunteers, the United Way website. And the bristlespromise.org can be accessed also through the United Way website. So we know those things are, can be reached through, one stop to reach all of them. So if people need to remember where to start, that's a good place to start. So if there are no questions, yeah.
You were talking about Frontier Industries and they, and telehealth, and they are working with our more anxious citizens. And so if someone were in need, how, how? We know that in other areas, you know, mental health has become just brought to the forefront. And I think that as we look at this, we have to consider the virus. We have to consider where we are from an economic position, but we also have to take care of our mental health citizens. So if someone is in need, how do they get in touch with someone to help them? Or if you have a family member or someone else in the community sees someone that's really in need from, from an anxiety position, who do they contact?
Well, they can call the Suicide Prevention Hotline, and I'll look that number up really quick, unless Melissa, you may have that. And, or they can call the Crisis Center, either one. And if they are scared because they think they might be infected with the virus, which I think that's probably one of the biggest issues right now, they can call the Nurse Connect line, and I can give you that number, 833-822-5523. And they're gonna be the ones to screen them to determine whether or not they need to be tested and so on. Melissa, do you have either one of those suicide? I can look them up real quick if you don't.
I do. So the National Suicide Hotline number is 1-800-273-HOPE. It's 273-8255, and that's also the National Veterans Home, and it's a 24-hour hotline.
And does anybody have a number for the Crisis Center? We can look that up. I just think it's important for us to communicate these specific services that are there as, as we, we're at the beginning of this, this, and for us to be able to move forward with the correct tools and.
Frontier Health also, and our local mental health services. That's, I'm sure that's where you can also call to get an appointment with one of the telehealth. I'm sure we are gonna say, see those being very busy, but that would be a good place to start as well.
So the Crisis Center's hotline is also to help them answer the, the call for the local Suicide Hotline. So their toll-free is gonna be 1-800-273-8255. And after hours, it will be routed to a 24-hour. So you can always call that number. And if it's not, if it's after hours, it'll go to somebody else that somebody will.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions? Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Lisa, with the stimulus package that we just voted on, do you anticipate some different revenue streams of monies coming in to help?
Well, I hope so. In fact, that's something that I didn't mention, but I've had somebody looking at that since last week. And you're talking about the SBA loans and that kind of thing? Or are you talking about, okay, yeah. I'm actually doing a webinar, it's either tomorrow or Wednesday, for United Way Worldwide's putting together, to help us to have a better understanding of those opportunities for our local nonprofits and what's gonna be available to them. And then we will be sending out a flyer to them with specific information on how they can apply, if they can find out, haven't yet, who, what banks locally are gonna be handling that. And then we'll get that information out to them this week and try to help them to navigate the waters for that. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? All right, so Melissa and Lisa, we want to thank you very much for joining us. And particularly, thank you and everybody else who is working hard to serve everybody and answer needs and to address our community needs. So we appreciate you a whole lot.
We appreciate each of you all, and Bill, Margaret, and everybody else. Melissa, hey, everybody. Thank you all so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think next on our list, last time, Mr. Sor, we had a lengthy update with everything that had been done with our city services. So if you have some things to add to that, that would be great.
I'll run through a quick update. Like I said, it's, the lengthy one was last Thursday. There aren't substantive changes since that period. Our Police Department is reporting a pretty good uptick in domestic violence calls, and verbal threat calls are also trending up. Again, this is not, this is almost typical to what we see during the holiday season, when, when people are together more in, in the same confined area more. So this was not an unanticipated phenomenon. Over the weekend, we did deploy PPE on one EMS call. No, no results as far as, as what, you know, what, what, what the outcome of that, that would be. But as, as our numbers indicate, we're heading, they'll, we can anticipate more calls of that nature moving forward. From a public work standpoint, our transit operation, and some around us are changing, but we, we are continuing to maintain the same level of service, and this is largely due to the population that we serve. It's, that, the population normally avails themselves of our, our public transportation system. This is their only options, or the only option for healthcare services, the only option for grocery stores, pharmacy availability, and so forth. And the majority of those riders are traveling on our fixed route system. We do frequently sanitize the bus. We do have a Plexiglas between the driver and, and the passengers on the bus. We do, we don't allow seating in the first two seats. And then we also restrict the number of riders on the bus to, to, including the driver, to less than 10. So we're taking the precautions that we can. Certainly, the restrooms in the downtown center are open while our transit system is underway, and they're, and they're clean throughout the day. From, from a solid waste standpoint, some around us have, have altered service delivery. We have not. I think it's important to continue that service. Certainly, the, from the, from the 90-gallon rollout, or what we consider Class 1 organic waste, that has to be, from a public health standpoint, addressed on a weekly basis. But brush and junk, and this was, this is one of those weekends where it was a free weekend. A lot of people did yard work. A lot of people did, did a lot of the types of, of work that, that perhaps during rainy weekends that we've, that we've had trending in, in past, in past weekends. A lot of that work was done, and a lot of that waste material is out at the curbside. We continue to provide that service with enough. Bear in mind that our solid waste service, with the exception of one vehicle, is, it's a single-operated service. So, so that, that enables us to certainly do social distancing and continue to provide a valuable service to our community. From a park standpoint, we're taking some additional measures to, to protect our community. We can't sanitize playground equipment within our parks at any level of frequency. So we're in a process of putting the orange snow fencing around our playgrounds to cordon off those areas. We also had some incidents of, of Little League teams' impromptu game scrimmages or whatever this weekend, and that's, that's significantly out of bounds from a safer-at-home type order. So, so we're gonna need to secure those facilities. We've also, from a parks and recreation standpoint, there are portable hand washing stations that have been, that were deployed last week, one in our downtown center and one in Anderson Street Park. So those, those are important as we, as we go forward. Social distancing, and then frequent hand washing and hygiene is important to, to once again discourage and to spread of this, of this virus. Questions?
Did you say?
We'll handle.
You said Anderson. You said Anderson Park, Bill? It's one of the hand washing.
Yes, sir. Anderson Park has a hand washing station and then also our downtown center has a hand washing station.
I would also note that Bristol, Virginia is cordoning off their playgrounds too. That started this weekend for, for Bristol, Virginia.
I think Johnson City is doing the same thing.
A question that I have is, you know, as we try to communicate this thing on our, you know, I told you all there was Sawbrook today, large number, probably 20 playing basketball. And are we going to have signage in our parks relating how, you know, that we need to practice social distancing or?
In, in all honesty, in those areas where, where we have that type of congregating, we're going to need to light down the parks. We can't have, we can't do the social distancing and have basketball games.
Right.
For the, for those particular facilities. Now, if they're within other areas, certainly we want to continue to allow the open space to be used. But we, we also have to be prudent in terms of, of the social distancing aspect. Again, and I've provided you all data that is sent to me on a daily basis. Social distancing is a key piece to flattening this curve.
Right. What about billboards? Have we, have we considered through our community relations to put any type of billboardings up that said, that could maybe drive the point on home?
No, that hasn't been a conversation, no.
So I think what we'll need to, what Lee kind of looking toward is what's our media plan going forward? Can we kind of think of what's our publicity and PR? Which I'll, I'll say up to this point, it is kind of day to day with a lot going on. But I think trying to have a comprehensive plan and maybe some of that can be done regionally because our community relations folks have been working together more than they ever have. So maybe in the next week or so, we're doing a little more to try to figure out how do we do single messages?
Well, as. If they were talking, you know, with our television station and everyone being at home, if we could put together some type of programming about, you know, if you're feeling anxious or this is who you need to contact or have some of the people come in to speak about that, you know, to talk specifically about the virus. And I, I don't think people understand that this stay at home doesn't mean we're just all from everywhere. It means stay at home unless you're seeking essential services outside of the home or unless you're working within an essential service. You know, there, I just see, there's just so much movement. And of course, you know, we know that the only way to keep this thing flattened out and not to put an abundance of strain on our healthcare system is to stay at home. So, you know, I agree, Margaret, you, you read me correctly is that what is our comprehensive communication plan? And I know y'all have been terribly busy trying, trying to get us to this point, but I, I just think communication is still the main thing to emphasize how important it is that people stay at home and social distance.
Now, like the mayor mentioned, this has been a constantly evolving process and certainly what we've been working on really since Friday is, is the order that's in place today and, and trying to properly roll those pieces out. One of the things that, that we have discussed in terms of our community relations piece is some sort of a daily, some sort of a daily briefing as to, as to, as to different aspects of the COVID. But we also have to be very careful that it doesn't get lost. Like a, a good example today, you know, we sent out a release on a safer, a safer at home, as did Johnson City, Washington County, Sullivan County, Kingsport, Carter County, Elizabeth. And so there's a lot of messaging going out there right now. So that, those are all pieces that, that, that we need to deal with. As you, as you heard my, probably my, my phone chirp, I get a text message, staff is watching this remotely and, and John, John texts, are the plans for this type of programming are already in works. Next episode of Inside Bristol will exclusively feature those types of messages.
Right. Are we going to work with BTS's station as well?
That hasn't been discussed.
Okay, John, there you go.
My guess is that he already has and the other, I think, in conversations with you all here and also with our school system is critical. So working with the communications Rebecca Craddock with school system and with their administration. So I think those relationships are there with our department so can build those and work together. So, sounds good. Other, anything else? If not.
Speaking of the school system.
Yeah.
Speaking of the school system, Margaret, and I may have missed this, but have they discussed about restarting of schools or is it just everybody's out the rest of the school year?
That's directed to me. I believe that they pushed their start date out and I, I think it's like the 24th or something. I would anticipate that'll get pushed out further. But at this point, our school system, I don't believe that they have addressed an end date that would go beyond the current school year. So we may see that at some point, but at this point, I don't think that, does anybody else want to chime in?
I talked with Jill Harrison today and her, her questions were about their meal plans for breakfast and for lunch, you know, they're delivering to children. And I suggested that they get in touch with Danielle to see how that fits within the guidelines of this, this directive. So my understanding is that they could still deliver.
I thi, I think that we're comfortable that they would be an essential service under the health department order. Now, I haven't looked at Governor Lee's order to see how it works under that because that literally just came out at four o'clock. So, but I think that they were comfortable with where they are under the health department order.
Okay. Councilwoman Powers, the, if you, if you peel back some of the, the issues in the order, you'll find the answer to that. And, and yes, they can. Government services can continue to remain.
I just got a text from Jill and she said right now they're out through April 24.
Thank you. All right. If we're ready, Mr. Sora, we could move the, the last official item on our agenda is the actions that, that we took for proclaiming a local and civil emergency within the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And I believe we feel like I should read it since, which is very long. So people are going to have to take a deep breath and, and wait a few minutes. But Mr. Sora, if you can explain what, what put this into motion and how it works before we start.
Essentially, the Sullivan County, the chief medical director for Sullivan County, Dr. May, who was with you earlier, does have a statutory authority to, to issue this order. What we're doing is really just ratifying that order. So his, his order is in effect for the city of Bristol, but I think it is important and I, and I think, I think Mayor Fire Robin shared, we, we shared the, the opinion that it is important for us to make a strong statement as to the urgency of this issue. As Councilwoman Powers indicated earlier, there, there, there seems to be, you know, perhaps an attitude that, that can't happen to me or this is not, this is not real. So that for us to take this action, in my tenure with the city, we haven't had a declaration. So this, this is somewhat extraordinary. I think it does support Dr. May and the actions of the Sullivan County Health Department. It does emphasize the urgency of the issue. And all of this is done to simply flatten the curve of the incidents in our region and preserve those, those healthcare services for not only COVID-19 patients, but also for patients that, that encounter other types of emergencies that we typically see on a day-to-day basis.
Right. So I'm going to read it and then we have opportunity to have any further questions or whatever. So it is three pages long, so bear with me. So, whereas beginning December 2019, a novel coronavirus which caused a disease now designated as COVID-19 was detected in Wuhan city, Hubei province, China, and has since spread throughout the world. And whereas, oh bless you, whereas as of March 29th, 2020, 1,122,653 cases had been reported in the United States. 1,537 cases had been reported statewide and eight cases had been reported in Sullivan County. And whereas extraordinary measures must be taken at the federal, state and local level to contain COVID-19 and prevent its spread throughout Sullivan County, the city of Bristol and its surrounding areas. And whereas these measures include isolation and potential quarantine of individuals, groups of individuals and property and may include compelling individuals, groups of individuals and property to undergo, undergo additional health measures that prevent or control the spread of the disease. Whereas COVID-19 presents a danger to the health, welfare and economic well-being of the citizens of the city and may well result in an interruption of municipal services affecting the public peace, public peace, property, health and safety of our citizens. And whereas Tennessee code annotated 58-8-104 provides that the mayor of a municipality may declare a local state of emergency affecting such mayor's jurisdiction by executive order consistent with and governed by the Tennessee code annotated 58-2-11110, parentheses, three parentheses, A, parentheses, B. And whereas Tennessee code annotated 58-8-102 defines an emergency as an occurrence or threat of an occurrence, whether natural or man-made, that results or may result in substantial injury or harm to the population or substantial, substantial damage to or loss of property. And whereas Tennessee code annotated 58-2-11, parentheses, three, parentheses, A, parentheses, B, provides that such a state of emergency may be imposed for seven days and may be extended as necessary in seven day increments. And whereas Tennessee code annotated 38-9-102 provides that the chief administrative officer of a municipality may find the existence of a civil emergency and immediate proclaim in writing the existence of such civil emergency. And whereas city code sections 26-1 through 26-6 best the power to declare a civil emergency granted to the city under Tennessee code annotated 38-9-101, et cetera, in the city manager. And page two, whereas Tennessee code annotated 38-9-101 and Bristol code of ordinances 26-1 defines an emergency to include a natural disaster or man-made calamity that may result in the death or injury of persons or destruction of property to such extent that extraordinary measures must be taken to protect the public health, safety and welfare. And whereas Tennessee code annotated 38-9-104 and Bristol code of ordinances 26-4 provide that after proclamation of a civil emergency, the city manager as chief administrative officer may, at the city's manager's discretion, in interest of public safety and welfare, issue such other orders as necessary for the protection of life and property. And whereas on March 13th, 2020, President Donald Trump issued a proclamation declaring a national emergency concerning the novel coronavirus disease COVID-19 outbreak. And whereas on March 12th, 2020, Governor Lee issued executive order number 14 declaring a state of emergency in Tennessee to facilitate the treatment and containment of COVID-19. And whereas Governor Lee has issued subsequent executive orders consistent with executive order 14 and intended to limit the spread of COVID-19 within the state of Tennessee, such being executive orders number 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 and 20. And we have heard that there's another one today. And whereas on March 30th, 2020, the Sullivan County Regional Health Department issued a Sullivan County Safer At Home Public Health Order, the quote safer at home order, urging residents of Sullivan County to shelter at home, prohibit gatherings of more than 10 people and closing non-essential businesses. And whereas the safer at home order will take effect at 12:01 a.m. on March 31st, 2020. And whereas the COVID outbreak is a natural occurrence that may result in substantial harm to the population of Bristol, Tennessee and to their property has already resulted in the declaration of federal and state emergencies. And wherever, whereas the COVID-19 outbreak constitutes an immediate and significant danger to the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas Margaret Fire Robin is the duly elected mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. Whereas William L. Sora is the duly appointed city manager of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas the undersigned have made such observations, inquiries and investigations necessary to determine that an emergency exists under the law of the state of Tennessee and the code of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And page three, whereas such emergency constitutes an immediate and significant danger to the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And whereas it is necessary for the undersigned as mayor and city manager to exercise the authority granted to them by Tennessee code annotated 58-8-104 and 58-110 and by Tennessee code annotated 38-9-101 respectively to minimize the immediate and significant danger to the health, safety and welfare of the city of Bristol. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city manager of the city of Bristol, Tennessee. One, a local and civil emergency is declared pursuant to Tennessee code annotated 58-8-104, 58-2-110, 38-9-101 and a subsequent, and sections 26-1 and subsequent of the code of Bristol, Tennessee. And the mayor and city manager each invoke the authority granted to them respectively by such statutes for the duration of the emergency. Two, this executive order shall be given prompt in general publicity and shall be filled, filled properly, filed properly with the city recorder's office. Three, the provisions of the, of Tennessee Governor Bill Lee's executive orders 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 and 20 are incorporated herein by reference, including but not limited to the provisions of executive order 17 pertaining to restaurants and bars, the closure of gyms and fitness centers, the provisions pertaining to working from home if possible, and the prohibition of social gatherings of 10 or more people. All individuals and groups of individuals within the city of Bristol should adhere to the governor's executive orders. Four, the provisions of the safer at, of the safer at home order, a copy of which is attached here too as exhibit A, are incorporated herein by reference and are declared to be effective and enforced within the city limits of Bristol, Tennessee. All individuals and groups of individuals within the city of Bristol should adhere to the safer at home order in all respects and in particular to those provisions relating to sheltering at home and practicing appropriate social distancing. This executive order shall take effect at 12:01 a.m. Eastern Daylight Time on March 31st, 2020 and shall remain in effect for a period of seven days unless extended by further order declared this 30th. further order declared this 30th day of March 2020. It is signed by myself, by, uh, city manager Sora, by our city recorder Tara Music, and our city attorney Daniel Smith. First, I would ask our city attorney and city manager, did I read everything correctly?
I think you did.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, and I'll tell the public that, um, we know that Governor Lee has, um, taken some further actions. It happened right before this meeting, so we were not able to incorporate those actions into the verbiage, but we certainly, um, want to encourage adherence to his as well as to our, um, public, our health department's decree. So I think, um, is, does anyone wish to make any comments or, um, say anything further at this time?
Mayor, if I could add, add a little bit of, uh, from our conversation early this morning with the Health Department and the other governing bodies in Sullivan County as to how this will be implemented, um, the, the definition of essential and nonessential, uh, it, it can be somewhat vague. Uh, I think the governor's order does specifically call out, or for what, what I've been able to briefly look at the governor's order, it does call out, uh, certain personal care services and list them in detail as being nonessential and, and, and directed to close operation at this point. But I think the, it's important that from the context of, of the Sullivan County Safer at Home Public Health Order, the Sullivan County Department, Regional Department of Health will be making those judgments as to what's essential and nonessential. And it, and it's important to, to note this, is in that the city of Bristol is not making that call. The city of Kingsport is not making that call, nor is Sullivan County Government making that call. So that there is the, with those, with those decisions being made through the Health Department, then there's, there's continuity and there's consistency in, uh, in those decisions across Sullivan County.
Thank you. Also, um, yeah, we, this is regional and, um, the, the, what's being adopted in, um, Sullivan County, we're all, we're following the order in, um, Washington and Johnson City and, um, Carter and Elizabethan, they are following the, the, what's in our order, but they have to follow a different process for theirs. But they, it's unity and really appreciate the leadership of, um, Mayor Jenny Brock and Pete Peterson, city manager, and Joe Grandy in Washington County, um, who have worked really hard to be on the same page and to move together as a region. And also in Ark County, Mayor Shaw and Chris McCart, city manager of Kingsport, and, uh, Mayor Richard Benepol with, working together with our Health Department. So.
Well, and Irene in Bluff City, Irene Wells.
Irene Wells in Bluff City. Thank you very much. Absolutely. So, um, so, and, and everybody did feel we have to be on the same page. Our counties don't have borders. Um, so it's, and we know here in Bristol that our, our state doesn't have much of border either, uh, those little, uh, labels in the middle of the street. Um, okay, so I think if we want to move into, um.
One thing was, I, I think that it may be important for the public of, of maybe explain a little bit about, I mean, of the fact of this, the, the, what was just read is, is basically the same thing that the Health Department came out with today of letting the public know of, of the, the differences between the two.
The, so probably, so I, my understanding that if we want to, um, make sense of, uh, netting off our playgrounds and taking the actions that we need to do, um, and, uh, having a community pleasing approach for where our law enforcement work with our young people to let them know that this is dangerous and they need to, um, go home and be safer at home. Some of those things, my understanding is we really need to have this in place to be able to follow through with the, what the order from the Health Department does. So.
So would you say that it's fair that, that, uh, Health Department has given us the directive from a county perspective and then for us to be able to take specific actions within our municipal boundaries, we have had to have you and Bill, uh, do your declarations as well to, as, as a part of the Sullivan County, uh, Health Department's declaration?
And, uh, Richard is doing the same with the county and, um, Pat Shaw is doing the same in Kingsport. Little different process, but they have, they are, they are taking action as well.
Right.
It's, it, I think, I think, um, so certainly the Sullivan County Health Department, certainly the, uh, the mayors, uh, and city managers all felt like this is an important step. Uh, and the, our, our county health department has got out in front of this issue, uh, but y'all saw the cover letter it sent out. They, they would like to have the support, uh, of the three governments and, and, and so this is, this is how we provided that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with any of that. To Vince's point, I do think it's important to explain to the public why and, you know, and exactly what the threat is here. And I think y'all have done a great job explaining that. And I think it's important for the gov-, uh, for the community to know that, that, you know, this is really serious. I keep saying the same thing, but it is really serious.
There's no question this is a right approach. I mean, this thing is real. I mean, look at the news at any given time throughout the day and we'll see the death tolls continues to rise. And we just have to be firm in our actions and, uh, we'll get through this.
I was just going to mention that, um, we may, uh, maybe talk to, uh, John Luttrell about maybe some yard signs to go around. That would be fair, something, something fairly quick and simple that we could do to put up that says something about the, um, numbers of people in playground areas like basketball and other areas. Uh, and that, that we're going to be, that we're going to have city employees that are going to be looking in those areas as well. Uh, as the guys mow, they can pick them up and, uh, you know, if something gets fallen sideways, that's something we should be able to pick up in a couple of days. Uh, I was just going to mention also too, is if we're going to continue our, um, two days a week where we're doing briefings and doing this, um, type of, uh, meeting, um, you know, as we move through information, and we have in our last two meetings, you know, gone through a lot of information and a lot of updating from our health officials and so on, that if it looks like we're going to have one of these meetings where our updates are going to be fairly quick, we may want to, we may want to think about taking care of some other business. Um, of course, making sure that this takes precedence over everything. But if there's anything that we can do, I just wanted to throw that out there and get any other comments that I know Discover Bristol needs to make a presentation. We may want to limit it to 15 minutes or 20 minutes or something like that. But if one of our, uh, you know, uh, weekly or twice a week, um, updates would allow, uh, it might be worth, um, you know, thinking about other, other types of business that we can move into.
I think that's a great idea.
I think something that I had thought of that, maybe on a more positive note, uh, that, you know, our Economic Development Department is still working, they're still working on projects and, uh, I know they're working, trying to come up with some when we come out of this, what our plan's going to be. And so there are still things going on and positive things going on in our city. And, um, you know, maybe if we could have Tom or someone come and just give us an update of what is going on, on just a little different path of, um, the virus, I think would also be good.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to include the schools at some point to, they're doing a lot of outreach, a tremendous amount of outreach with, with food, with books, with staying in touch. Teachers are online with classes. And I think, uh, these meetings really are great to share with the community, a lot of the things that are going on while we are in the midst of this. And I think to have the schools involved. And I really would, you know, John, uh, John Luttrell always does such a great job. I would really love to, to have a greater understanding of the, uh, communication plan.
Okay. So I've heard, um, something with our economic development business, schools, um, and we probably need to not ask Thursday for our communications plan yet, but, um, um, when that could be good. So, um, some, somehow some of that on Thursday, and then, um, we also have next Tuesday, that is official meeting that I assume we're still at 7:00 p.m., um, as advertised previously. Um, and that's a little different for our process, so we'll have to figure out how we do that, um, if we follow our same agenda for that meeting, or if we follow it closer to what we've been doing here. So just trying to figure out what elements. Anyway, um, and, uh, do we want to look at a meeting for next Thursday also? Or y'all want to wait till Thursday and determine where we are after that meeting, whether we need two meetings next week, or just go with, uh, what we have right now and talk a little bit further?
And to make any difference to me, you know, I think we're going to have plenty to talk about, but if you'd rather wait. One other thing, um, just real quick, what I've got on my mind is the Small Business Administration. We've got a lot of people, uh, I've spoken with three, four different ones this morning, you know, looking for direction with that. It might be helpful if we could provide some, some brief overview to that as far as economic development to help our businesses keep going. That's a tremendous asset to, to small business.
They, it's great that there's some, um, early on outreach to our businesses, uh, from the federal aspect. So maybe we could focus next time on, on businesses and what's out there and what are we doing, et cetera. And then maybe schools give them this week to finish and get, to see if they would do update at our Tuesday meeting. Does that sound okay? And then if other, if other people have ideas, they can get to with Bill to add.
Next Thursday, if, if going ahead and leaving next Thursday on, because we are, that'll be 10 days out. And I think we should have a really good idea.
Well, the order that you put into effect today, that was put into effect today from the city is seven days. So will y'all just automatically renew that on your own volition? Or will you, uh, will we be made aware of that before it's put into effect again, or?
We, we can make you aware of it, it certainly, but, but it would be our intent to follow Dr. May's lead in this. And, and by statute, ours has to be renewed, renewed every seven days. You may recall, Dr. May, uh, indicated that his, his, his was, would be in place as long as condition warrants. So we'll, we'll, we'll be consistent with what, with, 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 what he feels like is appropriate.
But yeah, but I think the process is that, um, it'll be renewed, but we'll definitely, y'all will get indication, because we don't want to forget if somebody says, do y'all do it? And they're like, uh-oh, we forgot. Um, anyway, if that's okay with y'all for process. Okay, so I think we've got some ideas of, of going forward for some different things. So, um, we can take that and Bill can get back, uh-oh, um, Bill can, I think we lost somebody. Um, Bill can get back if anybody else has other ideas and we'll form up, uh, go over a draft agenda, just get y'all's feedback of what, what things look like, if that works. Um, does anybody have any further, uh, council comments for the end of our meeting?
Chad said his iPad has gone dead and he will look for instructions for next Thursday.
Great, great, great. Um, I guess that's something that's a little harder to do in person is just go poof and you're gone. Um, so, um, I want to remind our citizens about the census. April 1st is Census Day and, um, we had planned to do a press conference and some different things. We hope we will be doing some things at some point, but our community relations and PR people have been rather involved. So, um, that's going to be, um, sometime in the future, but in the meantime, um, we encourage everybody to complete those either online, on the phone, mail it in. Um, we want to have a, a good turnout. And does anybody else have anything? If not, I'll just again say thanks to our council for, um, working together at this difficult time to expect the unexpected and to, uh, adapt to it as well as we can. Um, also thanks to Mr. Sora, and please express all of our appreciation to all our city employees, um, to, for stepping up into this situation, um, and, um, playing their roles and beyond. Um, we also just show so much appreciation for leadership with Dr. Dr. May and Area Director Gary Mays, also to our other, um, regional partners. We really appreciate, um, appreciate them. And also more than anything, um, want to thank the citizens of Bristol, um, to, um, this is, um, we're with you and this is, um, the hardest thing that any of us probably have ever done. And, um, we're, we're not to the height of it yet. So, uh, we just want to say we're, we're with you. We want to help in as many ways as we can as a city. And the best way for us to move forward is together as a community, um, as we move into a new world now, and we hope a new world at the end. So, um, uh, getting beyond this. So appreciate everybody's efforts. I know council have heard from a lot of different people with a lot of different things. My email and phone calls have really gone up the last several days. So we appreciate everybody. And, um, at this point, we'll be back here at 4:30 on Thursday, and, uh, we'll get, uh, draft agenda out, but we'll have some updates and be able to move forward. So, thank y'all very much. If we're done, we'll say we're adjourned. And again, um, thanks to everybody. Thanks also to our technology people behind the scenes. We can't say thank you enough for your skills and also your help with us as individuals when we need it as well. So with that, we're adjourned.
Thank you.